President Mr. Meyer of the United States of America. To deliver a document for which stands one nation on your behalf.
House Call, John McCall Chairman.
Here.
Bill Omen Vice Chairman.
Here.
Brian Madison.
Here.
Chad Wilson.
Here.
Matthew Jones. Attorney Jeff Marner.
Okay, uh, review the, uh, finished last, uh, meeting. Everybody ready? Yeah. Very like, I'm not like it. Right. Yeah, good. Make a motion to go over here.
I left that.
Yeah. All clear?
Aye aye.
Any may? Any questions? I don't want solar.
Uh. We're just gonna keep taping this for like years or we're gonna like do something?
It's up to you.
Send a letter?
You can send a letter, you can send a letter, you can...
Send a letter saying they don't show up, then you're gonna start all over again?
Yeah. Make sure everybody else spent more time with us.
At least.
Hey, wasn't there, wasn't there just a letter, I think the letter came from APA about, uh, votes by George, uh, giving him tentative approval to do the, uh, solar on the new building?
It was APA, that's what I remember too.
Yeah.
Yeah. We haven't seen her in a while.
I'll, if I, I'll look through my papers.
Oh, I get it.
It might be in my email or something.
Send a letter, see if...
What's going on?
Cause it's been so long, it's like, you know, like they were doing.
That is something. Mark.
Good evening, Mark.
How are you?
Uh, we were here last night and we wanted to get approval on the professional survey that we had done for our property, so we corrected county records.
Okay, this will not affect me since I was... So what, what's going on with this again?
At this point, it's just a survey that we want to get, uh, the county records correct for our property.
Can we, can we put something on there or...
No, there is no site development. We are operating a new well in because our well is failing. That was the beginning reason to do the survey, to make sure we were away from the property line as we were supposed to be for that other piece of property that no one had the need of records. So we had it surveyed to be proper, so we could put our new well in in the transportation office.
The subject also, right?
Excuse me, was it the subject also? We had to move away from the subject a certain amount of feet. Right, it was in violation of, uh, regular water.
Yep.
Only 50 feet from our, uh, leach field. So it had to be moved in a failed over winter. So we have to replace it for several reasons, these, these vehicles. That, that's what's in front of you.
Uh, do you have the map?
Yes.
How are you, updates, so it's like we were here last month or...
No, this, this is what we, we were giving you last month.
Also, you should still have the full size tray left for you.
You got the full size?
And if I recall, Mr. Meyer, the attorney, is that a quick exam? Because it's just a boundary line of green.
Right.
That's also in that package.
That's why I asked you to take a look at that. Where was the old line and where did we get moved to? We don't have any reference of where it was supposed to be, now it's moved somewhere else.
The only reference was the county records, which are really wrong. Do you have a copy of the, what the county thought and then after you researched it?
May I, may I show you some on the, on the deed? It'll, it'll make sense. This is the, I did a ton of research through the county. The only, the only real description is this deed and this deed other than the Westfield track. This deed goes back into approximately 64 to 1950. And it says, part of number 21 and 4 and additional track, being on the west side of the highway. Beginning at a, at the large rock called division line between district 15, road district 15 and 16. Then it's westly Alahalo to the ledge rocks. Then southerly to improve such the duckweed field, the division line between number 21. Everything's on the county records. Everything on that side is fine. From the big rock, Alahalo, that was what was never surveyed, never marked. So I had to go to Dan Stiles and I went to Brian Callahan. And with them established, yes, this is the big rock. This is where my, this is Brian Callahan, this is where my property starts. This is the big rock right across the street is a, a tree with old barbed wire. He said, yes, my grandfather said, that's the rock, this is it. So we had it surveyed that way. He signed about boundary line agreement. That, that is the original property line going straight back to Dan Stiles, Brian.
Now, what did the surveyors say?
They, now this, this other, this, this is three acres that were split off.
Also, you can see that the property line has been moved like three acres.
No, no, no. Uh, hang on, yeah, that's right here.
That's pretty shallow.
The follow line is the...
This, this is the big rock.
There was no change.
There was no change, it was just never surveyed. And this gentleman, this is the three acre slice, okay? So I had to go back to Brian Callahan, find the original, the big rock up the hollow to the ledge rocks.
And these are painted trees that both neighbors agreed that their grandfather painted these trees and they walked this line and that is the original line. And after we had the surveyors survey it, all the dots lined up, everything lined up, and they signed off like this is the exact line that my grandfather showed.
That's the original, now somewhere in...
That's why they had the document.
They, some family member gave this three acre slice. So without the original line, we couldn't deserve our property. Because the town actually had it so far over, our hutch was not even on our property. But now with the, with the document, it goes, so we now know that this is our property line. This is the original.
And the original, and so this is, what is this little line?
That's our property line. This is the original property line, which was Brian Callahan and the gentleman who owned this three acre slice. And this has been stated, state here, state here.
The important part is to be... This line here. This, this property's, this three acre's, is the old square.
Yes. And it's been sale.
And that's what we said when we were on last night, that this is ill for sale and if someone purchases it, we don't want to have an argument over the boundary lines. So we had the surveyors go back to 1803, right? And this is the exact line that's there in 1803. And that's what the neighbor of three on, Ian three on, and that's why we're trying to get a document.
That's a, that's a different one acre lot that was sold.
This is where, so where is your line?
Right here, this is us. And you, you can see the little teeny dot there, that's the original hutch house that Randy Smith did back in the 90s. But it was poor construction, no well screen.
And exhibition.
It's just, and it's okay. The leach field is right across, like 50 feet. So...
That's where they were done here.
Yeah, it was. But we decided that it would be much better right back there, right through these lines. That's where the new well is going, we had a skid run back there. Uh, we just cleared it out a little bit, so it's easier for the truck to get in. And, uh, we'd just like to get the survey so we can get it to Washington County.
And protect our property from that other piece of something that'd be the one.
Uh, I want to say it's a, it might have been a bad, but it's not now. I mean, it was given for a dollar, actually, in my, I had a whole stack of DMs to go back.
He doesn't even remember where the property really is.
And we tried to contact him, he really wasn't concerned. I said, well, we're doing a survey and he's like, you know, he's like, no, he's too old.
The realtor, I saw them outside and she asked me where she put her sign because they don't know where the property starts or something.
Then we just, then we just, we got a big rock up Alahalo.
But it's a property line agreement, it's very simple, we just want to get a document into the county.
Especially just... Why was it, um, mentioned it would be exempt from my law requirement?
Uh, it never said it would be exempt from my law, it's exempt from southern.
Cause it's here in the minutes, it says it is exempt from my law requirements and my real...
Herbage is what I meant with that, like the smudge over there.
If you are gonna prepare a mylar.
Actually, yes, our, our surveyor...
You gotta record it.
Our surveyor's gonna send it to the county, use a professional surveyor.
Mylar, mylar is part of the, the survey. He said, let me know when you get it through with 4D and we're gonna go to Washington County with the mylar and get it recorded and sent.
They definitely want to file a mylar because the whole purpose of this is to correct the Washington County tax map records, which are flawed. So that's why they want to go to the county, but I'm quite agree with your perspective.
How was that? Who told you to come to us?
Um, I talked to Washington, to Bill.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, Bill and Heather, I've gotten to know them because I've done so much research trying to figure out, to get the surveyors in the right, the right spot.
From what they said is they're gonna send it to you for approval anyway, so...
Yeah, it has to go through 4D, so we said go through 4D first.
Forward and hurry to you guys, you know, so we wanted to do that first step. We apologize for not being in the docket last night. We had thought that the currency move would be a quick item, just because it's a, an agreement, not an adjustment. I think that's a huge difference in wording. I mean, it's an agreement, signed in notaried by our neighbor.
Do we need any verb in down there?
We got the back with the actual lot lot.
I, I believe, uh, once the mylar gets to Washington County, their, the whole package is probably gonna come. Or at least Bill's gonna call somebody and say, hey, can you guys...
Once it's done, it needs to come from the chairman.
Okay.
Bring it back here.
Absolutely.
Thank you. We, we... The county attorney, but they said, commentary to you so you guys know what you're looking at when it comes to you.
So, what they do is they send a letter saying, did you guys know about this management adjustment? This board would say no, and it's in violation, that's why it's...
Okay, great.
Okay, so I can, I'll get the surveyor, get the mylar, hopefully by the end of the week, drop it off.
I'll make a motion for the boundary line correction. That's fine, but the chat's more of the language, it said, no new lots are being created.
Great, we need that language. And those lines will be created.
No, no, sir.
That's right.
Well, a second.
One second. All clear?
Aye.
Uh, any may? Any questions?
All right, these are my originals. I, I think we did, yeah, we did, we certainly had to think about this. I'll be called because I will get the survey and let you know. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All your time and attention to the detail.
Low crops.
Mr. Colonel.
There you go. So did you wish? From the town board, I'm still alive.
You got everything?
We need the various disturbing aspects. So now my understanding is it gets kicked back to you guys to get approval, then hopefully I can come and fill.
Want a paper?
No, I couldn't find one, I need, I tried but couldn't find one.
I have one.
Thanks, I hope you'd be willing to tell me.
About $8,000.
So nothing changed on the map, um, nothing changed at all. So you guys know the areas for the payphone, washer dryer, water each site, showers. For all of them that could, could, they'll see various ways of, of, of...
The only thing I had a condition of was that sort of water tap.
Yeah, the water tap, right. Oh, I'm sorry. That's a glory.
I, I know what you read last time, it's like, no storage. No storage.
That's the only thing that I was...
Maximize days, I think it'll be seven days.
Seven days.
That's probably how I'm...
The question I have for you guys is that, Mr. Morrison, is several times we've been meeting. Once the town, Jeff Michael, what's better? Once a town, my board, and I go through the town board and I get this camping approved. So now, any changes from here on out through DOH is what I follow, is that correct? So if the Department of Health makes a change or if Department of Health can develop a rule, I now shift to Department of Health because it already comes through the town?
It depends on change. If it, like it was starting, if there's a change to your site, so you had to come back. If the Department of Health says you need to do something different, requires you to build an extra building, requires, you know, a change to your site, like to the plan, you have to come back. If it's, I can't figure something minor, if it's something negligible, I would, or not notice, and it may or may not require you to come back.
Okay, so if DOH's rules and laws change, make the board aware of what's going on, you just say, listen, this is what changed, this is what made your handle story. So I want to know what you're moving for.
What did you say, once a Sunday? You said something once a Sunday.
Sunday's day, max. No, we don't.
They're not, they're not, they're not.
Set up, set up in June and...
Not running around. There's still a lot, there's still a lot that we just...
No word, I can't.
No, just a, it said well longer than seven days, so I can't, and in June, I stay there until September or Thursday.
And the reason for that is the most events in your legal system. If I have an event that comes in, they either be there and sell for seven days and the event is still like open and operational during like traffic. I don't want to have to come back to the board and say, can I have this week for seven days? I just want a seven day max away.
Uh, your plans for your, uh, additions to the...
That?
The path?
Yeah, the county law, like...
I know. I have a similar. I wonder if you, the resolution from the town board, that you guys, like, read on the... Town board asks you guys especially to look at some concerns. One being noise from generators on the campus. One being, uh, the DOH's quiet hours, 10 o'clock. One being copies of all Department of Health permits, copies of any and all Washington County permits. And the last one, they asked to look into that camping should only be permitted during operating hours, which is separate from the seven days that you're asking for. Which is different from the 30 days, which is on this. Those were the issues that the town board would look at, the map conditions and our requirements, they are noting them for reference.
I didn't, I don't know.
I, I didn't think that either. I got this left here, but I...
It was attached to, I saw it too, I can include it on my expenses.
So, so what were the, what were the issues?
Uh, noise, noise from, uh, generators. Um, quiet hours, when generators are, are not allowed to run or anything like that. Copies of any, all that, Department of Health permits.
Uh, you swept the, to the board, to the town?
Right. Essentially confirmed.
Should have the copy, should have the copy.
You know, while you have this, we don't have a file, we're still trying to get it.
Department of Health is the one you guys had first.
Okay, so get copies.
Copies of any, all that, Department of Washington County permits.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, camping should only be permitted during race, uh, Thursday, Sunday. Those were very strict.
Very strict.
There were no conditions, it was...
Well, I don't think it's fair. Uh, I don't think it's fair, they're there all day, they're all day on Sunday and they lined up at 5:00 o'clock and they get out to wherever.
I would be upset, that's so...
I know what I'm saying, I have a big yard. The lady was tweeting, who wants, who wants to pack up and bail up and stuff like that?
It wouldn't be me, but you have something I know. All right, so we, we recognize, what do we do? You guys at most can set the application, deem yourself as lead agency and refer it to Washington County. Get notice to all other involved agencies. Whole home travel trailer, local one, deems us a type one action agency. Which is why Jeremy filled out a long form, environmental assessment form, and provided the...
To the town board. Really decent.
Correct.
But you need to follow one.
Right. Okay, well, the copies will have paper, that's, that's, that's a little brain.
And hutch work.
That's, that's, that's not a problem. Quiet hours.
DOH is 10, it's at 10:00 PM. And a camp sort of, all of us.
10:00 PM.
See, so that's when we generate the...
Ready?
Isn't that kind of standard, like, why don't you state, you know, the whole things that way?
Because Department of Health controls those schemes as well, so I don't know.
Generator noise.
It's gonna be quiet.
Right, with that logic, it's done.
I always think something like... When I agree with your saying, it's almost like a summer.
Right. Uh, we'll make it six days. Copy nice.
I just know the process is coming back, you can ask me for a variance in seven days, if an event comes in, if there's an event on Thursday, what I want, on Wednesday, I just... It's natural, I was asking for seven, not thirty, because what's it say, so hutch, what, thirty on map, I don't mean thirty days on a clock.
Seven days is... We got a seven, that's what we...
So you're saying my question to you, to... But that's what has to be able to, it's likely.
Is that what you're getting, rain days, rain states?
Well, that's, that's...
This is an... This means everybody... The full moon wasn't up there, then...
All right, I guess we said, and you got, one day, three day.
Yeah, so how do you, how do you make it all out?
Did you say, is it agency? Yes. Unfortunately, you... So it's gonna make motion, uh, lead agency. All right, I'm trying, yes. I'll make a motion, can you be the lead agency? If you have any discussion with temporary required time, the seven day standing. This doesn't need to be...
Oh, it doesn't need to be, oh, okay.
Uh, what's the motion? Copies of all paperwork.
All paperwork?
Okay.
My hours.
I think...
What you're looking for is to establish yourselves as lead agency and set up a public hearing, a few applications for Washington County.
Okay, set up a public hearing. And for... This has to be a Republican, you know, some chief of state.
Yes. I have a second, yeah. All clear? Aye aye.
Aye aye.
Any questions?
And you're coming back. Oh my goodness, I'm dying. You're like a hulser.
You're telling me, you're like a hulser. So when is that made?
It's the fourth Monday. That's fair, we love it.
I can put ourselves to be out there.
Is that fair, Chris?
So, I think I fair changed that last year.
Yeah, I did.
We did.
I'm glad you're here.
I'm glad you're here.
That's what I'm asking you here.
It's not fair. But since there's no anticipated legal... You guys would be...
This is the board, right?
I know, this is it, this is it, so... As far as I know, it wasn't that next month.
What I'll do then is I'll work on hutch, we all speak for, we'll, we know you're trying to get it wrapped up for me, which is the original. Thank you, guys. Right on.
Did you guys see this again or not? I don't know. He dropped off a small copy, so this, he might, well, there is a surveyor who's dropped this off to me, so I clearly just planned that, but it's pretty simple. It's simple, simple. One flag, uh, this house here, this house is on his parcel. This house is just a, it's on half way, it's not there.
Okay, so this is my, if you like, that's kind of the...
Right.
Now, all right.
Well, this, there will be a right way, this right, it goes here, comes back to it, so it's gonna be, be involved in, so it's gonna, it's gonna be, the right way to this house from here. This is, this is what I wanted to create a right way for this to serve.
Probably agree with the original, right, right, so that's small.
Right. If this, this for sale is on my parcel right now, we're gonna split it up and sell it because it's just, it's time, so this is two. So basically, these two lots, maybe for our, I'm sure that, because one of your partners is there, so we should have the, we're gonna split them off.
But this, you're, you're in the right way, you're...
Yeah, please go to D, a right way to this house through this lot, it's basically gonna share a right way right now.
It's gonna be a multiple right way, though?
No.
Yes, directly going to this lot, through there.
Where is that?
Over here.
I don't think it's, uh, okay, we can...
I can't see that good, but I can see that.
Yeah, again, I just most of this, because this house got dropped off. I don't think that seems, to be honest with you, but.
These, all these parcels on this side, America's never go access.
Well, if I were to assume.
The reason I question if there's a right way to go on, this is kind of like in the middle of nowhere.
Oh, yeah, I know, so I don't know what the road on the backside is, you guys know, you probably know better than I do.
It's adorable, isn't it? That I don't know.
I can tell you, come on, give me one second, because I have a little GPS thing.
Alright. Right, so they're not. Right, that's a property there.
There's creating there.
Oh, creating, three lots.
Is that what needs to be created? Right, you know, I consider it now, what's starbuck?
Yeah.
Starbuck.
So all these properties have access. Center of.
Wait a minute, hang on, there's a, he's starbucking.
Oh.
And doing Fred, right, so.
Alright, she got a lot there, a lot there, a lot there.
Oh, I should see, parcel lot is now.
Always a. Oh, yeah, that's a pill.
Oh, yeah, so, uh, this, panel. Trying to figure out where this is. This may, this may not be the same as I first, eight, thirteen point eight, they have content on dude's per group. So that is not any.
Well, we came.
Yep. And then Bailey, which I'm gonna assume that changed, and it's some point here. Because this is showing Rupo, really? Yeah, but here's the, and they had, uh, they all French, right, they're here. So this is Greg's lot, right here. And I have David Allen, that's really hard, I don't really care, she owns that. That's the only one that I would assume has some sort of access, but I don't have a opportunity to break that. This is Bailey, but that's a different name.
That's one, that was, that was true. Over here, for the center.
Yeah, so that way, I, I would assume might be, you know, some kind of access, if it doesn't have, you know, some sort of access from somebody else's.
Right, Ellen's there, so I'm sorry, it stays there. Just quite a bit of elevation, there, up through. Squeak the right way to there?
A good driveway, could be flipping, it's not something he wants to do, sell it, he wanted just to de the right way through this one to that house. That's ideal, obviously.
Okay, is this kind of like, he is around, but it's blocked.
Yep.
Okay, so the, so the, the one lot, you're having the, the wrong way, right, right, for the, for the housing, where you're. Right, big lot?
Yep.
Right. And, and this is gonna be shared, between this lot one and. This lot here.
That's what we like to do.
She's gonna have to be in agreement.
Yeah, that's good, that's being proposed right now, they just, um, to ensure, um, he was, he was, and ideally, he said that's the easiest way to do it, it's just the. He didn't want, but, um, something there, you know, saying that we have to do a right way by X lot time, et cetera, he just said, basically, he's, he's around to do the right way for. I guess it's called lot, huh?
Yep.
Yeah, it's a lot, so, that was ideal, but. Is that four, I don't, I, I honestly don't know, I'll be naming on there, whole lot one. Oh, yeah, that would be four, yeah, it's a lot, so.
I just want some kind of, like, I guess, a point of view, that there's always problems with the right place, like, you sell it, and. Mister Smith buys this lot, and I'm not sure what your, who's the main team.
Nobody is, but I can tell you right now.
No, I don't, I mean, the drive, you were driving.
Well, it's a, a no use agreement, it means.
I mean, it has to be something.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's being proposed right now, this literally just got dropped off. So that's.
I feel like this started because I take care of.
Oh, no, that's easy, I mean, that's something that would be, also whatever.
Yeah, perfect, the problem now, is another right way.
Well, that's why, obviously, he put the permits out there, so wasn't just that he had to, the bad lot being bad, really the problem, had to have that lot. Right, so there would be an option, somebody could want to share that right way, if it, but, in all reality, it's the easiest thing to do, because it's kind of their perm. This house is here first, this house is here second, so that's why it came up that way, he split it off with the devil house there, so. It's the easiest way to do it, because it does go by another little garage, and we can actually, we can share it there. So, that garage forms that house, which again, could be something that you could put a driveway into, the elevation rules, I've got here and there.
I'll give you more, you give this to, over here, one?
Correct. Yes, sir. Over there. Hi. Name, name, name of the.
They only force it.
Yeah. So, what, for, for anything else, besides?
Just bring the, like, the, the, the.
Easy.
Yes.
Yep. And that'll be, uh.
Please, so.
That's all, yeah.
Okay, I have some. Okay, there's some.
Yeah, what do you got?
I don't know, what you got? You got quite a lot of here.
Depends who's, uh, looking at it. For something this big. According to this, for something, it's all going to lose her, and without this big, you know, not very big operation. Definitely three thousand feet a day. That did work, meaning on there, it worked. What's, uh, the problem?
Problem is, that you never came from site where.
I did, I'm gonna, even, uh, the site, I'm gonna be able to. Work here, but I don't exactly, so I'm glad, but even if one, you get.
I believe, if I're all right, that you came in and just told such you were doing, and said, it was just gonna be a real small thing, just doing it once in a while, without big operation.
We didn't.
We didn't have a site plan.
What do we have?
Well, there has a check in it. And there's notes that say he came before, I also got the information, but there's no notes that show him, because of return.
Oh. It is, okay, you know, I talked with Bob Zunder of New York State Ag market, and this is considered an agricultural activity. You know, trees and forest products are considered agricultural, he says that he doesn't see where, say, community would be required for any of that activity, but it's.
The world problems.
Where the reason he's here, so just, we want to test the floor, whenever you feel it's right.
Say that again, please.
Where, we put the complaint in, for his neighbors, so at some point, when you feel it's ready, you finally showing up, testing, talking about the subject.
Oh.
Well, it could, typically, the, Adam Mark's exemption, uh, requires the exemption from public access and the trees to be harvested on site. So if he's bringing in wood from elsewhere, it's a small, it's not.
That was the distinction, that, the.
Alden, or, like.
Right.
Alden, that commercial.
Right.
Are you partners, you're on trees?
Not a lot, that'll, but I do firewood also, which is an agricultural activity.
Would you cut about three thousand to a quarter?
Three thousand to a quarter? I mean, in Auburn. Not to me, not a lot.
No, it's a lot, that's, that's a lot.
I mean, there's someone that's gotten thirteen thousand feet a day, means roughly about two forty thousand more, but, you know, that is, over there, but. When you work out, eighteen thousand feet by practice, it's not really a lot, in terms of, like, the song, on the lower end, it's right. After cut more than people, you know, get selling.
You're kind of under business, like.
Little paper. I just get what you got. Just make them, is that what you're saying?
There, I thought he literally, you know.
No, he didn't, no, he.
I thought it was two, but, but there was no paper there. They had, had a, you're saying, we're gonna, uh, hours of operation, days of operation, or they're, they're, in one place, some days, we know.
An hour or two on a Sunday, you know, to tie up things for the next day, and some, from Sunday, it's great. It's a quick Congress, I think. And, uh, Congress, I work Sunday, so it's, you know.
Clearing in for a second.
That's fine, that's fine.
So you like, you guys have been in, uh, for a small meeting. I can about the.
Alright.
And I have to have that, like, I'd say about two weeks, unfortunately, every time, to get out to these guys.
Alright, she had that voice.
Well, it's a dead line.
Yeah.
Yeah. Give me the pad, next one, and have it, have it all, hold on to this. Alright. Okay, single. Okay, anybody from the color, any insight?
Thank you, sir. Where, where are the neighbors, uh, right attached, so he's here, and we're right next to him, uh, been there for twenty-two years, he actually knows where the, the little bit, the little area. And I think it's a little bit of weight, I don't have anything against Doug, he's a hard worker, I've never seen, he's grown exponentially. Won hundreds in the last year and a half, so the fact he's staying in small time right now, won't be the case in a year and a half, two years, that's what he wants, you can ask him, he'll be honest, he wants to be huge. So, um, our only really complaint is, I understand there's only laws and reasons, I have a recording, it's eight, ten hour day drone of the store. Just, ah, ah, all day, we've been here for twenty-two years, we have my D V agents there. He, we don't want to bother anybody, but if I were to take the truck and drive it and put it a hundred yards from your house, revving up to five thousand RPMs and just leave it there for ten hours, six days a week, how would you feel? It's gotta be something to protect us, I don't lie to him, it's just me speaking, is I don't want to hurt him, I don't want to do anything to him, but, I don't know, how many tons of dirt did you just bring in? Approximately? Hundred tons, hundreds of trucks, hundreds of truck, plant and truckloads of dirt, taking over every day with no effort, to do anything about the sound or the dust he's putting. I have our house, I can rub my hand with the dust, so it's, he's not doing anything, he's just in the middle of what, far guy, rolling out the dust.
You know, let me put your driveway, and it made a lot of noise, too.
Yeah, I don't have.
I heard every good, I live right across the street.
I don't have an issue.
Well, well, I'm a certain.
I understand, no, but I don't have an issue with noise, I understand farm traffic.
They're gonna be on a farm, they feel.
Seven days a week.
No, not seven days a week, they don't farm their fields and make noise seven days a week.
They do.
But, okay, I don't want to, but, I understand all the different things and noises, that occasionally, community or likely to blow up, occasionally, community or likely to blow up, a truck driver, by making lots of noise, oh, nothing. You live on a road, there's a gravel pit, we moved there, and you can gravel pit there, we've been there twenty years, you, area, my property values hanging, does this giant thing is coming next to me? How you can understand that, all I ask it, is he spends as much controlling the sound as he does tripling his eyes of his property, that he just did two weeks ago. Um, and he spends as much control in the dust, the sound being the number one issue with the dust, if the wind is blowing that way, it's an issue, if the wind is blowing this way, it's an issue, but the sound is relentless. I have some recordings, I can let you hear, they're just personal recordings on my cell phone, from my living, I'm on my phone in the conference chair, wow, then he's got a clutch that's, wow, all day long, three minutes. Eight, ten hours a day, every day, except for Sundays, where he's there, sometimes he's got the salt going. Eight, ten hours a day, every day, except for Sundays, when he's there, sometimes he's got the saw going, and he's got the edge going, and somebody else is there, he's got three workers, two workers, I don't know how many, with a chainsaw. So now you've got the saw going, you've got the edge going, you've got the chainsaw going, and I'm trying to enjoy my property. But I don't think it's there. And I think he should be held to control the sound and his dust. Other than that, I, I'm not trying to give anybody a hard time, or hurt his living, or his being, I don't want him to destroy our life, which he has done. Ask my, ask my wife, I mean, we can't even have dinner on our foot, um, without how we hear, you know, riding, and sawing, and coffee. And it's very exciting, we've been here for the rest of our life, we're in a peaceful neighborhood, we keep our place nice, and, um, those are our two basics, is the sound. And, and I understand the, the, I, I love motor vehicles, the, or race track, I was on his side, because that's a couple, three days a week, for a few hours during the summer. This, it's year round, this guy works when it's ten, zero, ten hours a day, I've never seen a man work on it. Which scares me about the size, because he's just gonna go, and anybody who's seen it a year ago, to now, it's nine days, it's gonna be the same way a year from now, unless, you know, he's controlled through the sound. Hours of operation should be considered, and, uh, to dust, it's gotta be the sound, and the ones that protect people, so, some of the things, I can, I can, that's it.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I live right across the street, and the noise is not bothering me a bit, the dust, I think is blown, because most of our wind comes out of the north and the west, and doesn't blow from the south, north. So I don't see how it's getting any dust.
Maybe the new driveway that you just put in has something to do with the dust, maybe the antique cars that aren't registered being outside, getting dust on them, like, do your thing, I don't know.
Okay. Um. I'll move any cars that need to get, whatever you exactly want.
No, it's.
We're gonna just finish, slip your site plan, and then we'll have to have a public hearing, or.
Uh, Boland, Charles Boland?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well. Wait, not you, I think. It's also, we, I don't know.
Listen, I'm sorry.
Yes, okay, uh, to be a public hearing, for Mr. Boland, you gotta explain, you gotta, you gotta, and, uh, are there any questions, or?
All I'm doing is, I've got an acre, acre of some land, farmland, and I got some homeless people that wanna buy seventy-five acres of it, and they didn't want my house, and wanna build their own. So, I wanna subdivide five acres out of the same people.
Just five acres for you.
For myself.
Your vote is?
On Rastlinville Lane. I got a Whitehall address, but it's in the county.
Is it Whitehall or the forty?
It didn't count forty, it didn't look, but it's right in the corner, Grandville, Whitehall, and forty.
What do you have?
Great, full number.
I do, I got a Grandville phone number, Whitehall address, eighty, forty.
Any other questions from the public?
Can I make a motion, propose a public, yes? Yeah, can I make a motion, propose a public hearing?
I'll second.
All bigger?
Aye.
Hey, Dave?
Have opposed action agree on material terms, or did the doctor, the, the, or zone?
No.
Opposed actions, change any certain types of use of land?
No.
Opposed action create a character or quality of the system, community?
No.
Opposed action impact environmental, characteristics, supply of settlement, or critical environment layer? Opposed action result in adverse change of natural resources, affect of the water bodies, groundwater, or, or, or? Opposed action causing increase in use of energy, or fails to appropriate, uh, reasonably available energy conservation, or illegal, or, or? Opposed action that consists of a public or private book, or you want, or lease order? Opposed action create a character or quality of the point, historical, architectural, and aesthetic resources? Opposed action result in adverse change of natural resources, affect of the water bodies, groundwater, or, or? Opposed action result in increase in potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage? Opposed action create a hazard to environmental resources, or even help?
No.
Other motions, make a negative, that's the grade.
I did. I'll second.
It's, it's all in favor?
Aye.
Hey, Dave? Any objections?
Were you saying, the English here, by far, I?
Yes.
Well, they don't want, water farm.
And they, they don't, they don't use electricity, so they'd be less, because it's out there, right now.
Basically. Like, thought.
So what do I do now?
This is all moving to me, I'm.
You have to get a survey now, from your, 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 your. So you'll be ordered, it's, it's.
Oh, it's, no, make a motion.
Make a motion, not move. So, so, yeah, sketch, that's, that's.
Yes, we might, we might, it's, 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 it's.
And then your second, your second.
I'll second.
All bigger?
Aye.
Hey, Dave?